Okay, let's open the meeting. We'll begin with a roll call.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Dooper.
Present.
Councilman Papesku. Mayor Prettempey-Lenard.
Present.
Mayor Riggsby.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a report from our closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council has been in closed session in their capacity as the Housing Authority Board. Item C on the agenda was a litigation matter. And the board received a report from the city attorney and gave direction to the city attorney to work with special counsel, Stradling Yoka, Carlson, Routh, to attempt a resolution of the subject matter or to respond to the complaint as necessary to defend the interests of the housing authority. There's no further action at this time to report.
Thank you. Next is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Are there items to be added or deleted?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I would like to delete item number 11.
Okay, that's noted. Now is the time for people's three minutes of fame. You don't get 15 here, just three. You have to come five times to get 15 minutes. So, comments for items not on the agenda. I'll take them in the order they're presented to me. First is Dory Morgan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I am one of five planning commissioners here in the wonderful city of Loma Linda, and I'm honored to serve this community. My Loma Linda address is on file. I came to this meeting to learn and to ask questions and try to figure out what is truth regarding this proposed annexation, donation of land from our sphere of influence to the city of Colton in Ritchie Canyon. And it's difficult sometimes to find information. So I'm hoping you can clarify some things for me. So what I've learned this evening, just being here, is that this piece of land that is owned by an individual is not, is within our sphere of influence. And is not under the purview of Measure V. Is that correct? Am I correct in assuming that?
I'll turn to our attorney to find out if, if an un-agendized item, we can do a question and answer.
Well, Mr. Mayor, as we're all aware, under the Brown Act, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or acting upon any item that's not on our published agenda.
I understand.
The City Council can listen to comments from the public and direct staff to give a very brief response, but typically if any action is required, that has to be placed on a future agenda.
I understand completely. Is it possible to clarify that, or?
It's a question that can be easily answered. I'm just not sure if this is the forum for it.
Okay.
But
So
you can contact me afterwards if you would like answers. I can give you my version of the answers if anyone else could do the same.
What is your issue?
My issue is my sense that perhaps the owner of this property within our sphere of influence is circumventing the boundaries of Measure V, which is our Hillside Preservation Act, which limits commercial development of large-scale, large-scale developments. And that's a concern to me. Our Loma Linda hills are prized. They're a jewel. And we use them for recreation, walking, hiking, biking, et cetera. Wildlife is profound. And to intensely develop this land will impact vehicular traffic in the Inland Empire and impact Loma Linda indirectly or directly. A lot of people travel that canyon. So I have a concern about that. Also, I want to ensure that we're protecting the public trust. We're trusted by the public to enforce their vote, and they voted for Measure V. So if this is within the realm of Measure V, we need to have further discussion. I'd just like to discuss that further, perhaps at another time. A question I have is how would the donation of this land to Colton benefit our city? What do we get out of it? How do we benefit? And if you cannot answer that right now, I understand, but maybe we can set up an agenda item for the future.
I, I, I don't, I don't typically answer a question with a question, but in this case, I'm going to do it. What is it that you're hearing that you're worried about? Because I don't know.
Okay.
I, I know the property you're talking about, but obviously there's a background of issues that I'm not familiar with.
Right, there are. And, and I may not be the expert on this, but what I'm hearing is this, this owner of the land wants to develop 350 single-family homes, including parkland and trails. And this will be in Ritchie Canyon, Colton. And all of that will feed into the canyon. And traffic is gridlocked as it is. The environmental impact report, as I understand, hasn't been completed. I have a son that lives in the canyon, and I don't like to visit him. I don't like the traffic either. People commute from Riverside County to the canyon, to Colton, to anywhere in this area. And so I'm concerned about that, looking at the bigger picture. Also, I'd like to preserve our hills. I'd like to keep them within our sphere of influence. Because it's something our family enjoys tremendously. So...
So the staff, do we have such an application? Develop 350 homes on that property?
No, no.
It would not go through us. It would go through the city of Colton.
Okay.
That's, the property is no longer in our sphere of influence. It's being processed by the city of Colton. We have no input into that.
But is, is that final?
Yes, it's gone through LAFCO. You're, you're in the wrong building.
So that's been finalized then? So it's out of our hands?
It, it is an issue between LAFCO and the city of Colton.
Oh.
It is no longer in the city of Loma Linda's sphere of influence.
Well, my gut is it's a way to do a walk-around Measure V, and I'm disappointed. Hopefully in the future, we have a way to discuss this before something like this is decided.
No, and I would understand that, but based on, on what Conrad just said, we have no control over this. So it's not a Measure V issue.
Okay, but Measure V holds over that land, or at least it did before it was annexed. Is that correct?
It isn't, it is not part of the city of Colton yet. However, LAFCO is designated in the sphere of influence of Colton. Therefore, any dis-
Let me, let me just help clarify this, because I think we're dancing around the issue.
Okay.
So it came up here within the last couple of years. There was a decision by this board, and it was a mixed vote, to release that land and if Colton wishes to take it. So this city made an action, and Colton now is in the position where they have to decide if they want to annex that property. It has not changed hands yet, because that is up to LAFCO and it's up to Colton to initiate that. But from our side, we did take affirmative action based on an application and a vote here that came before this body within the last two years. There is documentation, there's history on it and whatnot, and you could probably dig into all the reasons behind it. So that is the reality. We probably shouldn't be talking about it any further, but all that is all public information.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Larry Karpenko.
Mayor Riggsby and council members and city staff, thank you for allowing me to speak. I also wanted to speak on the Prado del, Rancho del Prado development in a similar manner as Dory to oppose an annexation. If there's anything in our ability as the council members to oppose an annexation, that would be what would reflect the wishes of Loma Linda residents. And so I want to, in any way possible, just remind that the representation of what the wishes are with Measure V is the preservation of those hills. So I think that could come really critical with, you know, our trust in our representatives, things like that. And so if there's any way, as we move forward, that we do have any influence on that, the current zoning is for 10 acres for one home. The new development has a proposal for 10 homes per one acre. The, it's a 350 dwelling proposal where even one of the nearest developments has 91. So it's going to be a big, big impact. Even if you were to consider improvements on the Ritchie Canyon road, the mitig, I don't think there's a way to mitigate a maximum capacity of a canyon. And so the ideas that Col, the city of Colton are, are looking at with this proposal seem very reckless to me. And I appeal to you as a, as a resident concerned here in Loma Linda. I also do love the hills and the preservation of that. And so I think that it's well documented where the, the Loma Linda residents feel on that issue. So if there's any way going forward that our influence can be for minimizing a development, that would be that impactful. And I have friends that have had vehicle accidents on that road and some that live in the community there. So I just want to appeal to you. We want to support our representatives going, you know, forward here so we can be behind you with the decisions that, that are made. And so I appeal to you, I want to be as positive as possible and to say that I want to support the decisions that come regarding this annexation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to assure you that when Councilman Dooper and I were elected, it was just in the wake of the Measure U versus Measure V votes. I can tell you that Councilman Papesku and Mayor Riggsby were right in the middle of that whole thing, beyond what I'll ever even fully understand. So I, I think you should feel confident that the Measure V vote, however many, 10 years ago or whatever that was, will, is still what we abide by, what we're passionate about. But again, you understand there are boundary issues here and sphere of influence issues here that put this outside of our control. But, but rest assured, I think as long as Papesku and Riggsby are on this council, they will be radically supportive of Measure V.
Next speaker is Jay Karolyi.
As he said, I'm Jay Karolyi, homeowner and resident Cedar Street here in Loma Linda. From what I've seen that, I'm not sure, I guess I wasn't aware that you are already, already had voted to allow the sphere of influence to be shifted to Colton. So my little prepared speech isn't going to work too well here. However, unfortunately, Colton has a history of, of being, of, of not adhering to even their own specific plan. The, they have their own Ritchie Canyon specific plan that has been in place. And in the past, when land has been moved over for development, they have not followed through with it. As you know, with the Crystal Ridge development, that was put in, they were promised turn signal and turning lanes. And they were also supposed to have two entrances into the development, and that was never done. And to turn over our control of our property, I, I think it's a bit irresponsible because they have a history of, of these shortcomings. Rancho del Prado has requested this land be given to Colton's control solely to get around Loma Linda's reasonable building requirements and to change to a city where they can get the upper hand in cramming in as many houses as they can. Like I said, they have this history with Crystal Ridge and all. And they have not followed through on several traffic studies. There's been traffic studies over the past couple decades. They have not followed through on, on these improvements. And I don't think we can trust them to, to do that as well. And while the property is not a part of our hillside conservation area, it's fully within, it is fully within the city limits. It's not just within our sphere of influence. At least it was, but I understand now it's been, been given away. So it's, but it is within the low-density hillside preservation area, which according to the general plan at least, shows that that is for four houses per acre, which is, you know, reasonable. But they, basically the developer just wants to move to a, a, an easier venue. And developers, you know, we, the city has done a wonderful job with development. I think the, you know, the people here that are here tonight aren't necessarily anti-development. I know I'm not. And the job that you guys have done developing on the California street area has been a real net positive. We need more housing for this new hospital. I mean, it's just, it's just a fact. But to, to turn it over to the, the southern city is just, I didn't know that it was, I never heard of a public forum or I don't know if there was any public input before this decision was made, but I'm not terribly pleased about that. Yeah, delivering the property to Colton is, in my opinion, not, not responsible use of, of the, the city's control of property.
Thank you.
So my understanding of how all this works, this issue was brought up to us in 2017, and it was presented in front of the, the board, and there was quite a bit of debate over it. At, at the end, what was agreed upon was the city would allow, if Colton wanted it, for Colton to annex it. And that process is to go through an organization called LAFCO. My understanding as of just recently, I have not heard that LAFCO has even voted on this because Colton has not approached them to actually take possession. So I think probably the strongest bit of influence that you could have right now is with the city of Colton. When all this was going on, I was talking to Colton council members. And my understanding is that residents of that canyon do not want this project any more than we do. And they were putting intense pressure on their council members for it not to happen. So I don't know where Colton stands politically on this right now, but their lack of approaching LAFCO to pick up the ball, it's like a tennis match, in my opinion, signals that Colton is not interested in it. And the reasons why are varied, and there's, like I said, there's a varied opinion here on this dais as to why that area was better fit for Colton anyway. As of this point, it is still in the city limits. We talk about sphere of influence. It's in the city limits of Loma Linda. And in order for it to move out of the city limits of Loma Linda, the city of Colton has to ask for it. And then LAFCO would make that decision. My understanding is that has not occurred yet. And I will confirm that with anybody here, and that is the correct position. So I understand this has kicked up a little bit because the developer is trying to maybe generate some interest or maybe put some political pressure on Colton. I'm not exactly certain. But I'm sure if you all are focused, you can probably do a little research and, and put some efforts over there into Colton at this point.
That takes us to item number one, Proclamation, National Mentoring Month, January 2020. Unfortunately, almost half the month is gone.
Before we read the proclamation, my sense is that there are people in the audience that are wondering why Loma Linda hasn't retained or asserted control over this property if it's within our city limits.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. So what's the answer to that?
Well, since it's in somebody else's sphere of influence, any development would then require annexation and development, EIR and everything to go through, the receiving entity, not the, not the county. Same as if we annex property out of the county, we have to pre-zone it, have all the planning, everything in advance for what happens before it comes to us. Now, Colton would have to do that before it leaves. As long as it stays within the city limits of Loma Linda, it still continues to be, I believe that's low, low-density hillside development. It will continue to fall under those rules. It's when it transfers to Colton.
So who's, who's in the controlling position, Loma Linda or Colton or LAFCO?
Colton and LAFCO. They would, Colton would have to request for annexation and LAFCO would have to-
So even though it's within the, technically, as I understand from Councilman Dooper, it's within the Loma Linda city limits, how is it that Colton has control over it?
The sphere of influence was transferred to the city of Colton.
And we did that for what reason?
It was a request from Colton and LAFCO, and I believe the property owner, to do this. So the, the sphere of influence was transferred to Colton.
Okay.
Anything that happens, as it sits today, it's in the city of Loma Linda. It's served by Loma Linda and follows Loma Linda rules. Anything that goes on there into the future will be planned by Colton and will be the result of annexation to Colton through LAFCO.
So if I am understanding correctly, it sounds like Colton is the one that's dropping the ball.
And everything would have to be handled through Colton. We would not be involved in any of the development of that project.
Does that help? Because I, I mean, I, I don't like bureaucratic confusion any more than anybody else, but that helps me if it helps you. Okay.
Okay, we're doing a proclamation. I'll read some of the whereas's for National Mentoring Month, this month, January. Whereas January has been designated as National Mentoring Month to focus national attention on the needs for mentors as well as how each of us as individuals, businesses, government agencies, schools, faith communities, and nonprofits can work together to increase the number of mentors. Whereas two-thirds of adults consider it highly important for our young people to have mentors. Whereas students who meet regularly with their mentors have many different measures of improvement in their life direction. And whereas the mentoring resource specialist and the mentoring task force are designated to bring together existing mentoring programs and resources. And therefore, I, as the mayor of the city of Loma Linda, on behalf of the entire City Council, proclaim the month of January 2020 as National Mentoring Month. And to receive this proclamation is Jeanette Zito from the Children's Network.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Riggsby and the council members here today for proclaiming January as National Mentoring Month in the city of Loma Linda and joining the rest of the county in doing so. There are over 24 cities in the county that are participating. I just wanted to share a couple of facts and just bring a little bit of awareness to mentoring real quick. The research shows that mentoring can actually play a very powerful role in providing our young people with tools to make responsible choices. Attend and engage in school as well as reduce and avoid risky behavior such as drug use. Research also shows that nine million young people will grow up without a mentor between the ages of age eight and 18 that will grow up without a mentor. There is such a gap, and we are lacking mentors. There are many great organizations that San Bernardino County works with, that we partner with, including CASA of San Bernardino. CASA provides mentoring and advocacy for foster youth. And they have about 119 volunteers matched with 181 mentors. That's great, but there's also a waiting list of 233 youth. So we just want to bring awareness that mentors are important, that we can all play a part in helping our youth. And if anybody would like any information about how Children's Network in San Bernardino County are providing resources and connecting the dots, you can look at our Facebook page, the San Bernardino County Mentoring Task Force. Thank you.
Okay, item number two, I will open the Housing Authority, and we will receive our audit report.
Yes, I'd like to have Sonia, our accounting manager, to present this item.
Good evening, mayor and council members, city staff, and members of the audience. We have, we're going to present to you the city of Loma Linda's financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2019. And up first is Brianna Schultz. She's the engagement partner with Rogers, Anderson, Malady, and Scott.
Good evening, mayor, honorable city council members. Again, I am Brianna Schultz. I'm actually the engagement manager, not the partner on the engagement. Terry is the partner and couldn't make it this evening, so I'm second best. I'm just going to briefly go through kind of the outcome of our annual financial audit. There we go. So just a quick overview of the responsibilities. So the city's responsibility, starting here, is really to ensure that the city's financial position and results of their operations are in conformity with GAAP, which is known as generally accepted accounting principles. That they're, you know, establishing sound internal controls, maintaining those processes and procedures, and ultimately preventing and detecting fraud. That is not a key, a key thing that external auditors are looking for. We are not here to find fraud. We are here to make sure that your financial statements are reasonably stated. So that, I've got that first bullet point there. And then second, so our responsibility as a firm is to just examine various evidence supporting the amounts and the disclosures that are reported in the financial statements in front of you, assess the accounting principles used, various estimates that were made, looking over the city's internal control policies and procedures, and ultimately expressing an opinion on the city's financial statements. And our opinion for fiscal year 2019 was an unmodified, or what is sometimes referred to as a clean opinion. So ultimately, the, there were no findings, no disagreements with management, excuse me. Estimates were reasonable. The disclosures are all properly reflected in the financial statements. Again, we had no disagreements with management. Another smooth and flawless year for the city of Loma Linda. And we want to thank the staff for their patience and, and help with this. You guys have a great finance team over here. So that kind of wraps up my, my quick little presentation, unless you guys have any specific questions to the audit that I can answer. Otherwise, I'll turn it back over to Sonia.
And just to, just to confirm, Loma Linda is your favorite city to work with, correct?
It definitely is, yes. And it's right next door to our office, so that's even better.
And we'll be supporting your move to partner.
Oh, thank you. I, I'll let Terry know that. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
I have a question. And this is, the report I'm looking at is from Deanna, so I guess I should direct this to you. But under the financial impact with the successor agency, you know, it gives some details. And then our net position deficit is 11.9 million. Can you give me some context and perspective on that? Because that, those kinds of numbers make, give me the willies.
The successor agency is kind of a unique animal where, because it carries quite a bit of bonded debt. And then there's debt also, there are city loans to the successor agency. That's why its liabilities-
And those are the bonds?
There's bonds, actually bonds out for, we did improvements out- There's bonds, actually, bonds out for, we did improvements at one point, and we purchased property.
Okay.
Financed it through bonds. So as part of the winding down of the former redevelopment, we go through what's called the ROPS process.
Right.
And we request funding to pay down those debts.
Right.
And repay the city loans, and then just fund some operations through that. One of the major things we're doing is the maintenance on the property. But because of the high liabilities, which are the debts outstanding, that's why it comes off. The ultimate ending is a negative ending balance.
So projecting out 10 years from now, what would you anticipate?
I project in 10 years, we would be in a positive, because actually, the bonds will be paid off by August of 2030.
Oh, okay, okay.
And the loans, we're estimating will be paid off in about three to four years to the city.
Okay.
So most of the debt by then will be paid off, so we will be in a positive.
So even though we've got significant debt, you feel that it's being managed properly and will be resolved?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
See, I know who the answer lady is.
You have before you copies of the city's 2019 comprehensive annual financial report. I will be referring to it as a CAFER from here on out. The presentation will go, will go over the financial statements of the city. The report is made up of three major sections that include the introductory, financial, and statistical. The introductory section includes transmittal letter that highlights the city's profile and significant events and accomplishments, the Government Finance Officers Award, a list of principal officers in place during fiscal year 2019, and an organization chart. Financial section includes the auditor's report, management discussion and analysis, the financial statements, notes, and required supplementary information, and supplementary information that compares budget to actual for each major governmental fund. And finally, the statistical section that includes financial trends, revenue and debt capacity, demographic, economic information, and operating information. The financial statements include the city, the Loma Linda Housing Authority, and the successor agency, which is a private purpose trust fund. The financial presentation of the governmental funds include funds at their modified accrual basis of accounting, and the government-wide statements, which means taking the fund financials and converting them to full accrual basis of accounting to report the city as a whole, and give a comparable view, view of the enterprise funds that are also run at full accrual. Next, we will show a recap of more important sections of the statements. This is the government-wide full accrual section. These numbers are shown in detail on pages 17 and 18 in the statement of activities. The beginning net position shows a net change in position of 1.95 million for the governmental funds, and a decrease of 1,022,000 for the business-type activities, netting an almost $930,000 change, and bringing the net position of the city to 134,979,721. January 8, 2019, city council approved an additional 8.5 million payment to CalPERS for the city's unfunded obligations. 6,593,000 was, was for the governmental portion, and 1,907,000 for the business-type activities, of which 512,000 was for sewer and one, almost 1.4 million for water. These payments made after PERS measurement date of June 30, 2018 got reclassified as deferred outflow of resources during the year, during the year-end adjustment to the full accrual method in this government-wide presentation. The net position for government activities totaled 107 million, and 27.4 million for business-type activities. The change in net position increased over last year by 1,4,240 dollars for the governmental activities, and decreased by 467,514 for enterprise activities. Total change in net position for the governmental activities was a positive 1.9 million, due to program and general revenues being more than program expenses. The business-type activities had an excess in expenses, and therefore causing the change in net position to be a negative 1,022,000. A detailed explanation of what makes up that changes, the changes is shown on management discussion analysis on page eight through 10. Continuing on, on the statement of activities, you can find this on CAFER, page 17 through 18. We can see the cost for the city to run governmental activities after applying the program revenues was 14.7 million, while the cost to run the business-type activities was 1.9 million. After offsetting this cost with total general revenues of almost 17.5 million, there is positive net change of almost 930,000. The change in net position for the city is higher than 2018 by 536,000. The slide shows the general fund balance classification. Total fund balance decreased by over, almost 4.4 million. As previously mentioned, an additional payment approved by city council in 2000, January 2019 of 8.5 million to CalPERS for the city's unfunded obligation. 6,593,000 was for the governmental portion. Of the governmental portion, 3.5 million was paid for, from the committed fund balance. 2 million was paid from the assigned fund balance, and 1,093 was paid from the unassigned fund balance. With the $1 million payment, the actual change in unassigned fund balance was 2 million, due to higher revenues coming in, such as taxes, fines and forfeitures, and miscellaneous revenue. The general fund had revenues of 23.2 million, and expenditures, expenditures of 28.2 million, as well as other financing sources of 559,000. Although the additional payment to PERS for the unfunded liability of 6.6 million made up part of the 8.8 million increase in expenditures from 2018, the total general fund, fund net change was only a decrease of 4.4 million. The revenues came in 2, 2,797,000 higher than in prior year, due to an increase in revenues such as taxes, fines and forfeitures, and miscellaneous revenue. The expanded information to this slide can be seen on page 23 and 24 of the CAFER. The summary of general fund budgetary comparison is seen on this slide. The original budgeted expenditure was increased through budget adjustments either at mid-year or throughout the year by 1.9 million. However, the additional amount was not spent. Conservative spending citywide with savings and personnel costs, professional and contractual services, repair, repairs and maintenance, and utilities, and classification of economic incentives as tax abatement per GASP 77. And you can find that on note 18 of the CAFER. For revenues, the original budget was increased by 2,365,000. However, the actual revenues exceeded the adjusted amount by 785,000. Major increases occurring in taxes, fines and forfeitures, and miscellaneous revenue. As seen here, the, the change in net position for the proprietary funds is the end result of operations for the business-type funds was negative 1,022,000, which is made up of positive changes for the water enterprise and sewer capital, and negative changes for the water acquisition for the Loma Linda-connected communities. The decrease in Water Acquisition Fund was mainly due to capital outlay expenses related to pherroptic infrastructure, water line expansion at Richardson, and locations as well as, and other locations, as well as the purchase of 4G water meters.
Can, can we hold on that for a second? Can you explain this a little bit to me? Why, why, there, I mean, that's a pretty substantial difference between 18 and 19.
Yes, the, the Water Acquisition Fund is the money that we receive from the development impact fee to increase the capacity of, of our water system. Last fiscal year, we have a lot of capital improvement projects for the water department. Which is, for example, we spent a million dollars for upgrading, upsizing the pipe from our wells in the city of San Bernardino, come up Richardson to the reservoir. And that, that's why it's about, you know, spent 92,000, but the project itself is over a million. That's the reason why. And, and the previous year, we don't spend as much money. That's why it's only, we spent 367,000 in negative. But we do have money in account.
So it's all progressive?
Yes, yes, sir.
And financially, we're still in good shape?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And the same thing with the connected community. And so, we, we just maybe do more projects and more improvement.
And we're, we're still getting water acquisition money out of the state every year, right? Or?
Yeah, from down payments on the loans.
Yeah. So we're not just getting, we're not just getting money from new developments, we're getting old money that was loaned to the RDA that's being paid back with interest.
Okay, thank you.
The decrease in Loma Linda-connected communities is due to the continued lack of revenues to offset the accruing interest on the loans owed to the, to the successor agency. The Water Enterprise ended with a positive change in net position of 191,000 as a result of ongoing operating expenses exceeding operating revenues, offset by transfers in capital contributions from the Water Acquisition Fund. The Sewer Capital had 266,000 more revenues and expenditures, therefore causing a positive 261,000 change in net position from operations. The statements for the proprietary funds can be found on pages 27 through 28 of the CAFER. This is a statement for the successor agency, and it can be found on page 32 of the CAFER. The net position of the successor agency increased by 6.4 million, due to a negative 15.4 million, due to long-term debt payments of 4.4 million, as well as an increase in cash of 1.5 million. The statement of changes in fiduciary net position can be found on page 33 of the CAFER. The successor agency received 4.9 million in property taxes for the 2019 fiscal year through the ROPS process. The deductions incurred of almost 2.4 million were for general and administrative charges, as well as interest charges on long-term debt, such as loans from the city and bonds. We would like to thank everyone from every department for their assistance in the preparation of the city's 2019 CAFER. The report information not only includes financial data, but also statistical information that is gathered from all city departments. Everyone's participation is very much appreciated. Thank you.
I would like to point out one thing in the report, in, on page four, bullet point number five, that said that for last fiscal year, our final budget in revenue is actually 785,000 more than we budgeted. And the actual expenditures is 1.9 million dollars less than what we budgeted. So that's a positive change of 2.7 million dollars. So we are in a good shape.
Significant, yes.
Yes. And then, yes, even though the, at the end, we in negative for general fund, and the reason for that, because we paid down our unfunded liability, so.
We paid down our unfunded liability, but we didn't get an offsetting reduction in our liability in this fiscal year because of the delay in reporting of that by PERS. So we essentially paid down a debt and got no credit for it on this year's financial statements. So next year, we're going to get credit, having not paid it down, and we're going to look really good. But of course, because of this astounding work of our finance department, we look really good all the time. Thank you very much. Great work. And Jarb, too.
A lot of, a lot of work is, is down there.
Thank you very much. And I'm sure we've applied for the usual Financial Olympics, where we get a gold medal.
Yes, we submitted the application.
Good.
The last week of December.
We look forward to awarding that, or announcing that award.
Yes, thank you.
In the future. Thanks. Okay, next we have item three of public hearing, Redlands Boulevard.
Good evening, mayor, councilmen, members of the public. My name is Lorena Materita, and I am the associate planner for the city of Loma Linda. My first presentation includes three applications. It's for the California Eye Care Center proposal at 25258 Redlands Boulevard. Excuse me. The applicant is free men and associates. They are proposing to construct a two-story, 30,382 square foot mixed-use facility to include an eye surgery center and space for medical offices and retail. The proposal includes a tentative parcel map to combine two lots into one, as well as a comprehensive master sign program to establish future signage criteria for the site. This map gives you an idea where the site is located and what's around it. It's located on the northwest corner of Redlands and Richardson. Surrounding uses include a trucking facility to the north, the Dutch Motel to the west, Redlands Boulevard, and a mobile home park to the south, and the giant vacant lot to the east. And even further north, we have the hotels and the 10 freeway. The two lots combined are 2.05 acres. The subject site is vacant, flat with minimal vegetation. It has a general plan land use designation of commercial, and is zoned general commercial within the East Valley Corridor specific plan. On the site plan, we see the approximate 30,000 square foot building has been placed at the front corner, so it has a strong relationship with the street. This helps maintain an attractive street edge down Redlands Boulevard, and visually buffers the parking of 125 spaces in the rear. Access will be provided from Richard Street, Richardson Street by a full-access driveway, and from Redlands Boulevard by a right-in, right-out driveway. Public Works is requiring that Redlands access be right-in, right-out only because they're planning to install a new medium right there at that corner. The trash enclosure meets the city standards and will be placed at the rear. There'll also be a six-foot-high steel fence at the perimeter, but away from the front yard. The project complies with all development standards such as the 25-foot front setback, lot coverage, floor area ratio, parking spaces required, et cetera. Other neat features that aren't clearly marked on the plan but should be mentioned is the street furniture. Bike racks, concrete benches or seating walls, and even exercise stations will be placed within the front landscaped areas, enhancing the pedestrian experience. 27.3 percent of the lot will include landscaping and hardscape. The minimum requirement in the East Valley Corridor specific plan is 20%. The applicant plans to install pervious pavers and decomposed granite in the front yard areas. The design of, some of the trees include date palm, Palo Verde, sweet bay, to be placed in the parking islands and planters. Shrubs include kangaroo paw, dwarf bartle brush, brush, and Mexican sage. And here at this main corner in Richardson and Redlands, we're going to see an Engelmann's oak tree, and I provided a sample photo here to the right. This is the first floor of the building, and this is the second floor. There is not much difference, because other than the California Eye Care Surgery Center, there aren't specifics yet for the other offices and retail. As you can see, the design includes a center corridor or lobby to serve as a public gathering space for breaks and lunch. There are three primary entrances. The lobby center corridor from front to back, and then there's also the corner tower entrance as a third entrance, which will provide easy access to suites for pedestrians and those clients who may be taking public transit off of Redlands. The Surgery Center itself will have two additions- The surgery center itself will have two additional entrances or exits for fire code and staffing purposes. These are the north and south elevations. The building is designed with a focus on modern and contemporary architecture. Up to the parapet is thirty-five, thirty-three feet in height. The steel tower is fifty-three feet. With views of Loma Linda, its southern hills, and the northern mountains, it will be a functional tower for the pledges of the tenants and their clients. The building materials and colors provided in the materials board right here out in front are La Habra Stucco of Fallbrook and Silverado colors. The tower is Corten steel. It's a sort of self-rusting reddish-brown. And as you can see, plenty of windows and lighting around the building.
Can you define functional tower for me? I don't know what that is.
That is, it's not just a decorative piece to see from the street, it's actually going to be usable, people are going to be able to access it. And like I was saying, it's going to have views of all over the city, the mountains, the south hills.
So people can go up, are they going to eat, or are they, is it an observation deck, or what?
I, I believe it's going to be both, is that correct, Brad?
Yes, that's, that's correct. It will be, um, I'm the architect, uh, for, for city council.
Yeah, I thi- I think we could, we could swing that actually, I'll let you talk to the developers about that. Exactly, the developer would like something in trade, so that's the developer, the architect gives everything away. But, yes, the intent is that the first level is an open entrance that is open for the public to use as an entry to the building as well as to sit underneath the tower. Second floor will be accessed by the two suites adjacent to it on the second floor. And so those would be the primary access levels. The third floor is level with the roof deck, so that is, is at this point more limited in access, but the second, the second level.
So that would be for like employees eating lunch, or?
Yeah, it would be, it would be limited, much more so than the second level.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so the first, the first floor is intended to general public, and then second floor and third floor would be for employees.
And if I'm understanding what I'm seeing, half the building is already designated for a clinical eye or an eye surgery center, or whatever it is.
Half, yes, half of the.
And that's committed.
Half of the ground floor, yes.
Half of the ground floor.
Half of the ground floor, so that's approximately seventy-five hundred to eight thousand square feet will be.
And, and the second and third?
So the second, so it's a two-story building, so the tower is a little bit stretched, but, yeah, so the second floor will also be medical offices under a similar but not exact ownership for California Eye Care. So there'll be more of typical medical offices for exams and some treatment and eyeglasses.
And are those obligated at this point?
Those two, yes, those two are part of the developer team.
So first and second floor of half the building is basically committed?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and the second half is at this point open for commercial or professional use?
That, that is correct, yes, with the emphasis on medical leasing, however, if you'd like to modify that statement.
Hey, I'll fill it in when.
He'll, he'll fill it in when I get out of the way.
And where, where the developer, I understand you're the architect, but the developer is confident that there is appropriate demand to fill that so we don't have half an empty building sitting there for a while.
I will let the developer speak on that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 thank you, it's Brad.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Daly, it shouldn't be a problem filling the building up. We, the only complication we'll have in it is whether or not we're going to be able to meet the, you know, the city's request that we put some retail in that corner. But I already have some interested clients in that regard. So we're, we're negotiating, but when you're negotiating with a virtual product that's not build-to-suit, sometimes it, people have to start seeing some sticks go before they have.
So the city is requesting that you have definitely some retail in the building?
In the early.
Is that for tax purposes, or what?
The discussions with the developer, and he's been very, very accommodating as, that the downstairs area.
Yeah.
He put some, some serious effort into putting a restaurant in there to serve the hotels. And, and we've discussed that even in the construction process, he'll have plumbing and gas and those type of things in the wall, not built out, but pre-positioned so if he does get a restaurant, you know, client.
So it's not a precondition, it's a consideration?
It's a consideration, he's been very, very flexible and reasonable in working with us on that.
No, that makes sense, that makes sense.
Yes, it's a, it's a consideration, so, and I should have said my name is Brad Freeman, so, we do have some, you know, we do have some interest. We just have to get to the point where we have something concrete that we can.
Sure, sure.
We can offer. So, we're not going to be sitting there with a vacant building. The zoning that's on it and the use code that's requirement and some of the things that are going on in the community, what we're trying to do is just do enough of a mix to where it appeals to everyone's interest. So, you know, theoretically, we can get a little bit more money off of the retail product than we, and that's that corner that's set.
Yeah.
At the hard corner.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, otherwise, we have a failsafe, we can lease it to some medical use and that's not going to be a problem around here, but that's obviously something that you guys want to see, a little bit of variation.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the choice of materials on the tower. I'm familiar with copper oxide and its beauty, but the traditionally iron oxide is not considered to be a beautiful thing. What's the idea behind a self-rusting roof?
Yeah, so the Corten steel, which was developed by US Steel, probably nineteen thirties or forties, became much, much more widely used in the nineteen sixties for buildings of kind of a wide, wide variety. And so it, it overall will gradually rust in a brighter reddish-orange. Over time, it goes to more of a darker patina that ends up being like a weathered thirty, forty-year-old copper. So it's, it's sort of a darker red-brown. So the intent is that it will not look like a dilapidated rusted structure, but it will have a more uniform reddish-brown that will be maintenance-free instead of a painted surface. And it is a, an element that would be aesthetically comparable to the water tower image of, of this tower. So the building is, you know, a eclectic mix, so that when we were working with Conrad early on, the intent was to come up with something that was reflective of Route sixty and its history. And in that mix would be some of the Googie modern, some more typical streamlined modern buildings, and then some of the historic farm elements of the area. So for my sensibilities, my sense of taste, I like the finished patina of the iron oxide in this particular type of product versus something that might ultimately be more of a copper oxide that is greenish in, in character. I think it actually ultimately is a fairly subtle thing after the course of ten or twenty years. And it's been used successfully in, in a very wide range of, of buildings, so that's, but it is ultimately, I think, a personal taste as well.
Thanks.
Sure.
Well, that brings us to our next slide, which is actually the rendering. So here, you'll have a better idea and look at the colors and landscaping of the building on all elevations. And this perspective gives you a closer look at the architectural features and enhancements in the design, such as the balcony areas, the tower, the concrete seating walls, and even a canopy edge for pedestrians as they walk to their destinations around the building.
Can you give me a little more perspective? So the tower is on the southwest corner of the building?
Southwest of the corner of Redlands and Richardson, but it's on the east-south of the building.
Southeast, it's on the corner of Redlands and Richardson.
So it is on the corner?
Yes.
Yes, it's on the corner. So this would be Redlands and this would be Richardson. One thing that we couldn't see in the plans was the weather-resistant outdoor exercise stations that will be placed along Richardson Street. This detail gives you an idea of what they will look like and how they'll function. Each one helps with strength training and provides cardiovascular benefits.
Is that Conrad's idea?
Is it Conrad? The design of the building, the landscaping, the seating areas, and the exercise stations, these are all extra amenities for the public to enjoy. As a design, the project covers two existing separate parcels. So along with the CUP application is a lot combination for two parcels into one. This is pretty standard when you're building on top of property lines. So here we see parcel one, that's point five-five acres, and parcel two, that's one point five acres. Combined, they create a large parcel of two point zero five acres. The project will also include a comprehensive master sign program that details the permitted signage and the requirements on site. I want to note that they plan to participate in our public art and, art and public places program at a later time, hence the reason that they are showing a mosaic piece that will be placed as item D here on the bottom, that will eventually be installed at the front center of the building.
Okay, if I can ask a question at this point, so the, if, if we succeed in getting, just as an illustration, a restaurant, that would go into the southeast corner, correct?
Yeah, right there, right there, she's tied it up.
And there would be signage space available for them, I'm assuming?
All of the current vacant space that we have that's not, we're, we're building this building primarily for a specific purpose, which is to fulfill medical needs within one of my clients groups.
Right, right.
Okay? And that's all in the west, that larger portion on the west side.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So everything that's available for lease, when the building starts to go up, will be on this right side, which is on the southeast corner. And the retail portion will be up in the front where the retail, you know, if we can get something to go there, that's where they'd want it to be, is on that hard corner, and that's where that tower is.
Right. And, and we're reserving space for signage for the retail?
Well, sure, there's, we, we predict that we'll have four tenants in the building and we've got eight for going in each direction.
The answer is yes.
Plus, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Conrad, I appreciate that.
He got his exercise stuff in the corner, so.
The applicant.
Just wanted to be sure he didn't overlook this.
The applicant does plan to incorporate many of the sign standards that are listed in our municipal code and commercial signage ordinance, such as the limit of an eight-foot-high monument sign with a five-foot front yard setback. The two monument signs, like you just mentioned, will be installed at each entryway and will follow a specific color schedule and also have a rock veneer base. And to answer your question, this is, he provided the stats for future tenant signs and what they'll be required, the colors, the dimensions that are going to be required of them. With an approved sign program, the code allows for modification to the normal sign requirements and provides a means for flexible application. In this program, there are two unique signs not called out in our codified so, sign ordinance. It is this large projected metal sign you see in blue, and as well as the building wall sign to go on the tower. The program, as submitted by the applicant, states that all future tenant signage must be reviewed not only by the landlord, but also receive additional permitting from planning and building and safety, so we'll have additional review. Measure V states that traffic level of service shall be maintained at current levels and new development shall fully mitigate impacts on traffic resulting from the project. The traffic impact analysis prepared by Urban Crossroads found that the project would generate eight hundred and twenty-six trips per day with fifty-five AM peak hour trips and eighty-three PM peak hour trips. Currently, Redlands Boulevard has a level of service of D during peak hour. Measure V states where current LOS is below level of service LOS C, then the minimum LOS is assumed. With the recommended mitigations, the impacts would be less than significant at the mentioned intersection and the LOS will remain at the same current level. In addition, the project will contribute a fair share basis of four point four percent in the implementation of the recommended intersection lane improvements. Roman Planning Group prepared the environmental initial study. They evaluated potential impacts and identified appropriate mitigation measures for air quality, cultural noise, and traffic, which were included in the conditions of approval and mitigation monitoring report. All impacts can be mitigated to a below a level of significance. Therefore, the project can be approved and adopted with a mitigated negative declaration in accordance to CEQA. As a reminder, a mitigated neg-deck, or MND, is the recommended document when a project may have significant environmental impacts, but certain mitigations clearly reduce the impacts below a level of significance. The notice to adopt the MND was posted and published on November eleventh, twenty nineteen, for the required twenty-day public review. The first public hearing took place on December four, twenty nineteen, with the Planning Commission. They recommended approval and added the following condition: to install landscape diamonds to break up the long stretch of parking on the west side of the parcel. That cha-
What are landscape diamonds? Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, okay, good.
So that specific change will be reflected on the construction plans during the plan check process. On January thirteen, twenty twenty, the, the owner of the Dutch motel right next door inquired about drainage and access to his side wall. Staff, staff clarified the water will not drain onto his property and also provided him a copy of the preliminary grading plan. In addition, because of that meeting, staff is now requesting to add an additional condition of approval to this project to address his concerns about access. So we added, owner of the subject property shall not block access to the adjacent hotel building, but instead allow future repair and crawl space access if needed. Since then, did you want to?
Yeah, basically, the, the Dutch motel is built right on the property line. And so if they need to do any work on that wall, they need to go on to this property. And they have two crawl spaces to get underneath it where the accesses would have to go on the property. It's in the landscape planner area, so it won't be a significant impact to the project. And basically, as long as they don't put any bushes or, or concrete right in front of it, it should not be.
So the developer has agreed to that.
Yeah.
That mitigation.
I, I believe so. He will.
We're adding it.
How, how long that Dutch motel been there? That's been there, I think, as long as I've been here.
Longer than you have.
Yeah, I, I'm not surprised. Okay.
Well, other than the Dutch motel, we didn't receive any further comments in regards to the public hearing notice that was sent out. So to conclude, the applicant met with staff numerous times to produce a design that is compatible with the existing neighborhood. It's in compliance with all codes, and more importantly, he produced a design that is in line with the general plan's commercial designation and that embodies the city's mission statement, a city focused on health and prosperity. With this mixed-use project, the applicant will be providing for the shopping, commercial, and healthcare service needs of the Loma Linda community. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend the city council adopt the MND and mitigation monitoring report program and approve the CUP, the parcel map, and the sign program for the California Eye Care Center, Eye Care Center, with the two added conditions to install the parking landscape diamonds and ensure the adjacent owner has adequate access to his property. So that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and so is the applicant and the architect.
The only other thing that I didn't hear you address and didn't see in the material you provided us was the lighting of the parking lot. I assume it's going to be well-lit?
Yeah, he, he actually did provide a photometric.
I, I take your word for it, just, it's been addressed and it'll be well-lit.
That was one of the requirements when he submitted his plans.
Okay, okay, I assume so, but I wanted to be sure. It's a very attractive-looking proposal, I, I, I like it a lot. So, good luck. So, good luck. I, I hope it all pans out well. And thank you for coming to Loma Linda.
And the Dutch motel was built in nineteen fifty.
Hey, there you go. It's older than you are.
A lot.
I can't say it's older than I am.
It's a lot older.
So I heard, I have a question. I heard something earlier about the sewer. Is there gonna be any impact on Richardson in the future? With digging up the street to, did I hear that correctly? Is that where the water lines, I'm sorry, the water line? Is it the water line that's coming up, Richardson?
No, not, not.
This section, the wall, I, that's going on right now, that's gonna go on, this item is, is, is already completed, is on the north side of freeway.
Okay.
Yes.
And there's no future work related to that?
There might be a future. We, we put in the, uh.
But on this side? There's nothing on this side?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So then the only thing that would be future, from your guys' standpoint, of any interfering activity to take place would be related to the median that's going to go in?
Correct.
And do we have anything defined on that at this point?
I, it's being, this, uh, I'm getting proposal, I would have a layout completed, yes.
What year would you project that that work would take?
It's budget for this year, if it doesn't get done this year, it'll be carry on, carry over to next fiscal year.
I'm sorry, can I intervene for a second? Are you talking about a median on Redlands Boulevard?
Yes.
I wasn't aware there were.
Right, because I haven't bring it over to the, uh, to the city council yet. Let me lay them all out and we'll bring it over.
Yeah, it's not a done deal yet.
Security clearance isn't quite that high.
Well, but you said there's budget and money for it, so it sounds like
unlike.
you had anticipated putting it in.
Well, unlike most businesses, it won't impact your ingress egress. At least, at least you have Richardson Street to fall back on.
Yes.
But you have, you have ingress at Richardson, right? But the, the I center is on the west side of the building, so you're gonna want people to get in and out of there.
The, in a, from a factual standpoint, without being argumentative, the median does in fact, affect our ingress egress because we were not allowed to have a write out because of the future proposed median going in.
A write out?
Yeah. I, anyway, the whole.
I'm sorry, left out, yeah, so left out coming from the west side.
Yeah.
Not, not to.
It's also too, too close to the intersection.
The conversation, but we've had a lengthy debate about mediums a few years back, and there was a number of businesses that were very much against it for a number of reasons, obviously, getting in and out. So hopefully, uh, it, it may be that if we end up not doing one, you may have a little bit more leeway in getting in and out, but for now, I guess we'll leave things as they are.
We understand that it's, it is what it is. What I'm just trying to figure out is if there's, it, you know, I'll, I'll state what we don't want to have, we don't want it happening during our grand opening, that'd be nice. You know, and so.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And so I'm trying to figure out what reality is on, you know, projections are projections, right? We say it's gonna be this date, and then we move that date, and then we move that date, and that's the way life is, right?
Okay.
You know, we're gonna, this thing's gonna go up like that as soon as we assumptively get our approval.
Yes, what, what happening, yes. What, what, what happened is the complaint lately that we received from the businesses along Redlands Boulevard is, at night, it's getting very dark. And along Redlands Boulevard, because the street is so wide, and, and the light is already on the two side of the street. So, so what we'd like to do is, is add a, a hot skate median similar to what we put in, in front of the VA clinics on Redlands Boulevard. In addition, we add a street light similar to what we have on, along Barton Road, which is the double arm street light along Redlands Boulevard, to help the hotel on, on the north side, and, and to, to light it up so that pedestrian and the tenant can walk around that area at night, so.
I understand where you're coming from, and I don't want to debate that tonight, but.
Yes, we'd be happy to bring it back, so, so, yes, yes.
It's, it's been shown that mediums who are not well designed have actually killed businesses.
Okay, yeah.
I can give you, Haspily Lane, where restaurants are struggling, because before, no longer go there because they're not gonna drive a half a block to make a U-turn because they can't get in and out. So we'll have to have the discussion when the time comes, but.
Yes, yes, yes.
It, it caught my attention when you brought it up, and I just want to make sure that, it's like, I don't remember approving something like that, so, but it looks like we're still gonna.
What we wanted to do was, what we wanted to do is lay out the eventuality so that we didn't blindside the developer and come back in the middle of his construction and say, oh, by the way, we're putting in a median, that way, if it goes in, he's aware of it and we're already pre-planned for it.
Median on Barton certainly hasn't slowed down the Walmart center here, and it's.
Well, that, that took an awful lot of work to extend the left turn pocket and extend the length of the, of the light, because for a long time, that was a mess.
Yeah, it was.
But we have a responsive department.
No, it's a good.
Yeah.
My bus. Okay. I do get kickbacks that are, yeah.
So, thank you, thank you for that. Is that the conclusion of the presentation? Okay, then I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this project? And our usual resounding response? No response, so I'm closing the public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the council? And we have several motions, and we'll have to ask for how we bundle them.
Before we do that, the, the only unanswered question I have that I can think of right now is, uh, what's the timetable? You said it's gonna go up like this, but can you define that? When, when are you planning to break ground? When are you planning to complete?
You have to prove it first.
Well, yeah, right.
So how long will it take us to go back and forth with the city on, uh, getting, getting effective building plans?
Once you get the final approval.
Yeah, it'll be done this year. We'll build this building this year.
Okay.
We'll be, um, doing everything we can to occupy it by the, you know, the end of Q three or Q four.
So your iClinic is ready to, ready to move in?
Yeah, we're ready to move. We don't do, we never wait. So, I wouldn't, there's not a single benefit that would keep us from, you know, vacancy's bad. Okay, we've even agreed to put much higher walls on this property because of the, you know, the traffic that's going up and down Richardson, and, you know, we expect that we might have to call Conrad to get somebody off the exercise equipment and, late at night. So we're gonna do everything we can to light that place up and fill it up. These are the two primary things that, you know, keep vandalism down and.
Okay. Thank you.
One real quick question. Did you guys discuss anything about like a restaurant or eatery or anything like that? Oh, God, I missed it then. Not a big deal, but just, uh, just to consider that you would have potential customers from the hotels too, correct?
That's, that's the idea. It's just a matter of whether, you know, I'd rather not get into that conversation. It's a little bit difficult to do retail in this specific community for a number of reasons, which I'm sure you're all aware of. Um, you know, regulations, we'll call them.
Actually, some of those have recently changed. I don't know if you've been keeping up.
What's recently changed?
Um, some of those regulations.
Yeah, okay. Something that I should be akin to?
You should probably ask.
Okay. Well, I thought I just did. Okay. So, yeah, I mean, we'll do the best we can to put something, I'm getting other retail type access, you know, but everybody's just, you know, hey, can I go on a tour? We're sure, go look at the lot, you know? And then, so once it starts going up, there'll be, there'll be interest.
Thank you.
Okay, you were gonna say something about the form of.
The five recommended actions are as stated on page one of the staff report. Adopt the mitigated negative declaration, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, approve CUP nineteen seventy-one, approve TPM twenty-one twenty-nine, approve comprehensive sign program, P nineteen dash one three four, all based upon the findings and subject to the conditions of approval set forth in the staff report.
I'll move the list as stated by our attorney.
I'll second.
Okay, then is there any further discussion?
Just a general comment. Uh, I, I don't know how far back it goes, but I think this is probably one of the nicest retails that we've actually built on Redlands Boulevard in a really, really long time. I mean, other than redoing the dealership recently, I, I can't recall the last time we actually did any retail or new construction on Redlands Boulevard. So we really welcome it. I think it's gonna really help that area, which needs a lot of help, and hopefully a little spur for the development. Catty corner from you, which will just bring more activity to the area. So we want to thank you and appreciate the fact that you've taken the time to invest in our city. Thank you.
And for buying the property. That was our property.
And for making that city a conference center.
Yeah.
Conference, of course.
We're still negotiating. I wasn't gonna say this until after you guys voted, but, um. No, I was just gonna say, I really do, you know, I engage with cities and government agencies here and there, and I've been doing this for about twenty years, and it has been really, uh, you know, easy in terms of the usual, what do we call it, barrier to entry, where the government tends to participate in a bureaucratic way. We haven't had that problem here, so that's good, and I've got something else. Sorry?
It's by design.
By design?
It's no, it's no coincidence that the Director of Business Development is also the Director of the Planning Department. You don't see that very often.
Right. Well, I recently just finished up Ford Street, uh, in Redlands, and I'm on television, so I don't say anything else, but.
Well, there's only about three people watching, but for those, for those three people watching, that is really the benefit of this city, this council, because we want the right business to succeed, and in turn, for you, that means that this should be a good environment for you to succeed in.
Correct, and so we, we, I have another project that we're trying to bring now to Loma Linda as a result of this specific issue where it's a little bit easier to do business here. Hopefully, we'll get an approval on that one, too.
Big yes.
Does that one have a conference room?
We're still negotiating.
It's good to hear feedback on what we designed to be a business friendly environment. So, uh, there's a motion and a second, and any further discussion? Hearing none. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, you have unanimous approval. Go forth and prosper. Item number four, another public hearing, annexation and pre-zoning.
Okay, so my second presentation includes a pre-zone and an annexation application for a site located in the South Hills Preserve area. It is not related in any way with the Colton D annexation. Just wanna make that note. The city of Loma Linda has initiated the annexation of six hundred and sixty-four acre city owned site located near the southern city limit boundary within the sphere of influence and in the South Hills Preserve. Concurrent with this annexation is a pre-zone application to establish the zoning districts for that area. Of the eleven subject parcels, eight will become hillside conservation and the other three to be low density hillside preservation. The vacant site is within the unincorporated county area. In accordance with Measure V, it is used strictly for passive recreational activities, including trails for pedestrian and bicycle use. The current zoning under the San Bernardino County ordinance is rural living ten, with a density of one dwelling unit per ten acres. The city, however, has designated that area as hillside conservation and low density hillside preservation in accordance with our general plan and the Measure V initiative. Although land use designations were established in Measure V, the official pre-zones were not. Before submitting to the local agency formation commission, or LAFCO, we are required to first adopt a resolution to allow us to start this process and take proceedings for the annexation. That has been completed, and this, this council adopted that required resolution on August thirteen, twenty nineteen. LAFCO requires that we also pre-zone the lots simultaneously with an annexation application. Since the general plan and Measure V have already designated the land uses, these proposed zones will be consistent with the adopted land use designations. On December four, twenty nineteen, the Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval of the pre-zone and annexation. If city council approves these applications tonight, then the annexation will be sent to and processed by LAFCO for their final ratification and map changes. Some of you are probably thinking, why annex? Well, the annexation results in the transfer of property tax revenue from the county to Loma Linda. A total of eighteen thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-three cents was paid last year by the city through property taxes. And why only these eleven lots? Because it, it's very costly and time consuming to include the other lots not owned by the city. The annexation area is located within unincorporated portion of San Bernardino County. Access to the area is provided along the northern property boundary via Mountain Ave, Mountain View Avenue and Canyon Road and Whittier Avenue. Internal roadways are unpaved and provide dual function as fire access and hiking biking trails. Annexation would not incur costs associated with the extension of services as no development is proposed. This is our.
Oh, sorry. Just had a quick question about the taxes. Why were we paying property tax on that?
Yes. We are city owned, but it's in a county area, so the city had to pay property tax in the county. So if we annex it to the city, we don't pay ourselves. So we save eighteen thousand, that's it. That's the whole purpose of the business.
That's the whole purpose of the exercise.
Curious as to, we, the fact that we own it, we, as an entity, why we would still pay property tax, period? That's the part that I don't understand. I, I would think that we, it's like, are we paying property tax to the county for this building? No, obviously, because, but it sounds to me like the only way to avoid taxes is to keep it in the city.
Correct. So, so, curiosity, do we pay property tax on, not on the parcel, but the levels, because that's actually city, correct? But inside San Bernardino?
I, not that it matters, I'm just, why would we even have to pay property tax to begin with? I just, I can't believe that we would have to do that, but I guess, that's just the rules.
The government agency wants theirs.
Well, great, so hopefully, maybe we'll try to annex more properties that we, are there any left? That we can save even more money, or?
That's city owned?
Well, also part of this South Hill, part of it is in the Riverside County. So we pay that one too, but we cannot annex across the county line.
I see. And the, and the part that you're showing us there to the left is already in the city? The one that's, that one?
Correct, correct.
So pretty much sound like most of the hills are pretty much within the city?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So this is our zoning map today. The subject area is, is this box right here? And all this beige color, that is sphere of influence, so that's with under county jurisdiction, but Loma Linda sphere of influence. And this is what we're proposing upon annexation. So the areas that were previously rural living under county jurisdiction will now be zone hillside conservation for three hundred and seventy-four acres and low density hillside preservation for two hundred and ninety acres. It will match the general plan and Measure V's land use designations. The density will also remain the same as it, to what it is with the county, which is the zero to one dwelling units per every ten acres. In accordance with Measure V, the area is used strictly for passive recreational activities. No future development could be permitted in the annexation area unless Measure V is rescinded. The area does not receive public services or utilities that involve infrastructure, except for fire and police services, nor would the area require an extension of any services upon annexation. It is part of the South Hills Preserve and will can, be continued to be used for trails. Approval of the annexation and pre-zone application will not change traffic or increase the existing use. It is city owned and will remain city owned. And lastly, the project is consistent and complies with the measurements of Measure V.
If I could ask a question on the first bullet. What is passive recreational? Like, that sounds like an oxymoron to me.
Walking?
Walking trail.
Not often.
What it does is prevent us from putting soccer fields up there, or basketball courts, or just kind of walking, or maybe.
So no planned recreational, all right?
That's correct.
Cycling?
Cycling, no motorcycles.
Yeah, but that's part of where I was going next, 'cause I know there's a lot of mo- I know some of the people riding those motorcycles up there.
And that's the issue we're dealing with on the existing property as well.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It's an enforcement issue.
So passive recreational means anything without a motor?
Anything about a motor and anything that's not organized, so hanging out, walking, picnicking, something, but not.
You called your friends and you say we're gonna go together, that's organized.
Then, then I guess we'd have to cite you.
Okay.
Lilburn Planning Consultants prepared the environmental initial. Lilburn Planning Consultants prepared the environmental initial study. The study evaluated the potential impacts of the project, including impacts associated with vehicle miles traveled. Because there is no development being proposed, there are no impacts, and we can recommend a negative declaration, or ND. The notice of intent to adopt the ND was posted and published on October twenty-second, twenty nineteen. The thirty-day public review ended on November twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. On December fourth, Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval of the ND and the project. Since the publishing for this hearing notice, staff has not received any comments. Therefore, a negative declaration can be approved and adopted. To conclude, the project complies with the goals of the general plan and Measure V. Because no development is being proposed, it will continue to be compatible with existing uses and area. And lastly, findings have been made to support the pre-zone and approval of the annexation project. Staff and Planning Commission recommend City Council adopt the ND, adopt Council Bill zero twenty twenty zero one, and approve the pre-zone and annexation applications. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions? Two thumbs up out of ten, so that's pretty good. Three? Okay, then I'll open the public hearing. Will our extensive public like to make comments on this project? Are you opposed or in favor of eighteen thousand dollar savings per year? Okay, there are no takers, so I'm closing the public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the council and Council Bill O dash two twenty twenty dash zero one?
I will move it, I'm just surprised the county isn't here to oppose it.
And this is just as the first reading and setting the second reading?
I'll second that.
For the next meeting.
Again, this includes the three actions on page one of the staff report, one, two, and three, and based on the information and findings contained in the staff report.
So be it. So, is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, then we have set the second reading for February eleventh. And we'll see you all then. Now, the consent calendar?
Move it.
I'd like to pull items nine C, twelve, and thirteen. I think they'll all be quick.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and now we're doing discussion. So what is your question on nine C?
Fabric art in public places, and I, you know, I know you're gonna put art in, and I'm certainly supportive of that, but I'd like some sense of what, are we gonna put, are we gonna put multiple statues of Phil Duper in the park for kids to admire?
If you wait, if you wait two minutes under seventeen B, I will have an answer for you.
That would violate one of the ten commandments, wouldn't it?
Seventeen B, I don't have a seventeen B. Oh, I do too.
Graven images?
Oh, okay, there it is, I see it. Okay, I didn't, I guess I didn't get all the way through my agenda. All right. I'll eagerly await seventeen B. That, that's the thing, you know, if it's all gonna be statues of Phil Duper with his guns and rifles, then.
See, not leave yet, speak widely, not leave yet, because you're part of the property against the people.
I think statues of Dick Wiley are much.
Okay, item twelve. Landscape maintenance district. Oh, citrus tail trails, so this is, this is trails for Lennar Homes, and talking about funding, maintenance of those?
Correct, is, is every project required to be a member of Landscape Assessment District, of which they are responsible for maintaining the parkway. If they do it themselves, they just pay the management fee. If they do not, then they will pay for the city to maintain those parkway for them.
It's not an each way, is it?
No, no. Right, now why does Landscape Assessment District, yes, sir.
So is, is it an attachment to each property tax for all, for all the prop, for all the?
Yes, just like all of us, yes, yes.
I just.
But right now, what's happening is, because right now, they still own the whole thing. So, so right now, they have to, to enter into the Landscape Assessment District, and then they, they sell the property, then each owner, the new house, had to pay that, that portion.
So the trails that they're putting in will be part of the plan, I'm assuming that they submit for approval? Or has that already happened?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, what's, what's with that trail, like the go-between?
DG pathways, and then the green space, yeah. What do they call that broad, whatever, I'm trying to think, the fairway, kinda between the two projects?
Passement.
And that's fine, I just wanna be sure we do a better job with that than we are with some of the maintenance out in the medians. And I can spell those out if you want me to, but I think you know what I'm talking about.
But a lot of those are underfunded, underfunded maintenance districts with no inflationary kickers.
That's my concern.
Yeah. Well, these, all the new ones have inflationary.
Cost escalation in it, yes.
The old ones never did, when you wasn't built.
Yes.
I just wanna be sure they're maintained, that's my issue, uh, 'cause I'm tempted to stop and start pulling weeds myself from time to time. I resist the temptation, but.
If you make a career of it, I'll do a proclamation for you.
I want more than a proclamation, I wanna check. Okay, and probably Ovi Pepefsky will wanna address this, but number thirteen. Why are we taking money out of the, why are, why are we paying?
Yes, I can explain.
To move the water line for a project that isn't of our making?
No, let, let me explain. IVDA is doing the widening of Mountain View Avenue from the channel, railroad track, all the way to the, to the bridge.
But how much of this is being generated by the new Arrow?
Correct, correct. Similar to what we did on Richardson as part of Arrow, we had to relocate our existing wall line that's in there right of way and upside it.
We have to pay for it.
Correct, because we are in there right of way. They were there first. Same thing with this one, we are in there right of way, but instead of redoing ourselves, or in that, on Richardson, SBCTA are doing it themselves. And on this one, on Mountain View, since IVDA is doing the street improvement anyway, and they have to do the widening of the bridge, they have to do the build the bridge itself, they decide to do it themselves. So therefore, we have to pay the, our portion for the relocation of the wall line and upsize the line.
And our, our portion is one point two million?
Yes, and we, we paid the cost. So whatever the bill is, not to exceed one point two five million.
Ah, I see, okay, okay.
So they will send me the bill, we, I review their initial proposal from the contractor, and then when the contractor sent IVD the bill, then it's sent to us, and then we reimburse IVDA.
That makes sense, I was worried that since, uh, Ovi's been on the IVDA board for about twenty years now, that he could have controlled this, but I understand.
Well, what's a little frustrating about it is the one million dollars we got from the IVDA to help with Mountain View off-ramp redesign, I know it's gone through, how do you call it, Caltrans, but they contributed quite a bit of money to that. We're giving it right back to them for this, which is a little frustrating. Just out of curiosity, um, let's, I, I know that that fund has lots of money, the water fund, so it doesn't affect our finances. But let's say we did not have the money. What would be our alternative in that particular case? If, if a jurisdiction next to us wants to do something, and is forcing us to change our infrastructure, what, what would be our option?
We have to bar, they can pay for it first, and then we have to reimburse them, pay them back.
Interesting, okay. All right, well, how much is left now in the water acquisition fund?
Three point some million dollars.
And it's, and it's growing because, because as.
And, and the thing is, all of this is as part of the Albany Pack Fee Study, we all have this all planned for, to upsize the pipe.
No, I understand.
So we, we have it planned.
I just didn't realize we had a pipe going all the way down to Mountain View, I didn't realize we had.
There's some other stuff, too, doesn't this also give us the ability to run continual fiber down to the airport, where we're gonna eventually be providing some technological resources to, we're gonna benefit with some other areas.
So what, what, as part of this, is since they dig up, they're gonna dig up the suite anyway, I asked them to put in a conduit for us. And we paid for it, a conduit, and to tie to, to our well site, 'cause right now, the well site controlled by the radio.
Oh, really?
Features.
Okay, so that'll help.
So that's why we put in fiber optic on Richardson, we can put fiber optic down on Mountain View, so we have a loop system.
That's good, I'm glad, 'cause I'm hoping that we did something out of it, other than just.
Oh, no, and then, when IVDA put in that bridge across San Ant River, we asked them to put in fiber optic conduit for us.
Ultimately, I think we're gonna end up providing.
So in the future, all we have to do is continue from Cooley to the bridge, put in, put a conduit in. We already go underneath the freeway, we are underneath the channel. This has been planning for many years, so when, when people do something, they jack and board the pipe underneath the freeway and the flood control channel, we asked them to put the conduit in for us, and, and we're gonna use it now.
I gotta take a little bit of a, a chance to brag about Jarvan Conrad here regarding some of this stuff, so. We've had some discussion with some of our IT people over leasing some resources from the city, and the reason is that this city is, sits on top of a level-three connection to the internet, which is like better than Google and Apple, and I, I'm being facetious, but the reality is, is that these folks have pre-planned our infrastructure so well. We are so far ahead of any other government in the area. It, it's really phenomenal, it gives us the opportunity to provide services to other people, the county, the city, whatever, so.
It does kind of assume that this airport's gonna succeed, though, right?
It's already succeeding.
I knew, I, I knew that would get a rise out of you.
Well, but actually, the extension, unfortunately, the expansion of Mountain View has less to do with the airport and more to do with all the warehouses that have been growing around the airport. So, it's just, there's just a lot of truck traffic that's caused by all that, so.
Okay, does that remove your objections to items nine C, twelve, and thirteen? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, no further discussion. Is there any opposition to the consent calendar? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Any reports of councilmen? Hearing none, any reports of officers other than item seventeen? Hearing none, then we'll do item seventeen.
Okay, good evening. Okay, believe it or not, the city was incorporated in September twenty-ninth, nineteen seventy, of which this year, the city will be celebrating the fifty-year anniversary. So, I have been preparing for, for this, and, and I would like to give the City Council an update of what has been done so far with regard to this fifty-year anniversary that we plan to do for this year. First, I gave you the, the fifty-year anniversary pin and the keychain. We kinda came out with design utilizing the existing pin that we already have, and added that year twenty twenty to it, and so that, how we came up with the design. Next, we came out with the design for the banners that was delivered, that were, we ordered fifty's banner that we delivered today. So this banner will go up on the street light pole along Redlands Boulevard, Barton Road, Mountain View, California Street, Richardson, and Anderson Street. And that's scheduled to be start going up next week. In addition to the banner, I am working with our Chamber of Commerce here, Karen, and we plan to have our parade on October twenty-fifth of this year.
That may be just enough time for me to get my old MG tuned up and working, so.
So, so the parade route will be from, from Ronald McDonald parking lot, going east along the south side Barton Road to the City Hall here, okay? And, so that will be the route. And the reason for that, for that is, we, the Loma Linda Academy is no longer do their, their fair at, at their, at their school. So what we plan to do is, we plan to have a special event at our City Hall parking lot here. So I'm working with Karen on that. That, that were possible. So right now, we are in the planning stage, we already have the, the pin, the keychain. We're working on the, the design for the T-shirt that we'll give out to the, the city employees and City Council, and all the volunteer that help us during the parade. Anything else that Karen want to add? Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, so there's still a lot of work ahead of us, but we are planning, yes, sir.
I know Jar's been saving money at every employee birthday, he lifts the candles off, and he's saving them. So for the cake, we'll have fifty assorted candles, slightly used.
Okay, this is just an update, so it's coming. Next, we're gonna have art in public places, that, that Councilman Daly asked. We have been doing very good in, in our city. And it's time now, I think, that we need to showcase that we're doing well, we need to bring some art in, into our city. So, the idea came from when I went to the city of Palm Desert at Al Passo Drive. They have art sculptures along the median. And, and this is, and also city of Beverly Hills, city of La Brea, and a lot of city are doing that. So I said, hey, why not? And, and so I put my artist hat on and said, let's do it. So, earlier last year, we have a group of lady and artists that said, hey, there's existing straw blade pipe that kinda at the playground at Al Madigna Park. And the artist said, hey, can we paint this? I said, sure! So the city paid for the paint, and they have volunteer that helped paint those, this reinforced concrete pipe at four different design at Al Madigna Park. And that park, since we have this, this, this artwork, we have a lot of kids that, that came out and play at the playground. Oh, by the way, we have a brand-new playground over there, too. So we have a lot of kids that really enjoy, and family to come out and enjoy this, this artwork at, at Al Madigna Park. Next, last year, we put up the, a silhouette of dog. Dr. Lennar, for your senior, when you drive by, along Beaumont at Dog Park. So we have a silhouette of dog at the, the big dog park and the small dog park, and we really get a good feedback for people that are using the dog park. Further, we have an artist that, her dad is a retired contractor that built a burls, or donkey, that we're gonna put that and paint it, and, and, and we're gonna paint, put that at the entrance to the Hodor Crooks Park, about right here. Next, we would like to have a sculpture. So the first one is, is a shape of the butterfly that we've, I found, I've been looking for somebody that can be able to build this, and I found a, a steel fabricator in the city of San Bernardino of Waterman, just north of Mill Street, that can laser cut this, this artwork out of, have in steel. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna build it, and we're gonna put it up along the, the south side of Barton Road. I will have to build a, a foundation for this sculpture, and then the city staff will install that. So this is one, the artwork. This is our glass that we're thinking about putting right there. And this is a teacup in different color, but we still have to look at what color, I think it's gonna be a yellow, but it's go along here. And all of this, we, we went over that with, with Park Improvement Association Committee, we went over the design and the location. So that's why I asked Dick to stay here. Yes, sir.
Is there anything to prevent bicyclists who hit that from being bisected?
Leave it to a physician.
I can see it happening, somebody's gonna fall down and slice their head open. Yeah, but, but, you know, there could be somebody, you know, a little child riding on the sidewalk and go off the side. Or if a car goes over the curb, is this thing gonna be breakaway? Is it so strong and so well-built that the car will go through it and, and come out as two cars?
No, no, it's, it's, it's just gonna flip over, because it's, well, only thing it says is it's welded on the steel plate.
I have a much more optimistic view of this, I think they're pretty, I like them.
Well, I, I went over that a lot, because the first thing is, people will come out and graffiti it, that's why we just.
Well, and that's where I was going, is.
Yes.
What about taggers?
Yes.
And, and how are we gonna maintain? And, and how are we gonna maintain?
Yes.
The taggers, if they use rust-resistant paint?
We, we, we got powder coated. So with a powder coated, you can, you can pressure wash it off, and, and we paint it back. So, so this is what we plan to do. And this is at, um, Cottonwood Park. We want to have this, uh, silhouette of a kind of flowers, roses. And what we did here is, we, we, we printed this flower, uh, on paper, and the artist actually cut it, so I went out there with the duct tape and taped them, just to take a picture and see what it looked like.
Looks nice.
So, and we went out and, and tested with the, with the magic marker and spray painted and, and make sure that we can wipe it off. Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
And this is, I think I presented this before, this is some of the artwork that we think about doing it, and, and we're gonna start off with this caterpillar and, uh, along Barton Road. And, uh, the theme is, the question came out from Lorena, is that why butterfly? Well, the thing is, with being near the university, the student that go to the university start off as a little cocoon, I mean, as a caterpillar, and then, as, as they, as they go through to college, they became a butterfly and then fly away. So, so that's kind of the theme, but why we pick butterfly right by the university? And, and, anything you want to add, Lorena? I, I, I think it's, it's, you know, something that we can, we can start. So-
Some of them crash and burn, but that's-
So again, um, I would like to get your, your approval and, and, and at least see what happened, and, uh, we get approval from the Park Amendment Vacation Committee, and I would like to move forward.
Transition into this?
Yes, yes.
A project that's-
Well, right now, what we're gonna do is, we already start fabricating the butterfly, and, and, and we put it up, and so we go from there.
We'll have some of the last, by the time we have, they got over.
Yes, sir. That, that's the whole idea, to have, along the route, we will have this, this artwork. Yes. No, but I'm a cartoonist, and this is, this is a lot more than- Thank you.
No, it's just a comic book.
And, uh, if that's the end of the discussion, today we're adjourning in memory of our former Fire Division Chief, Gene Brooks, who retired, um, fifteen years ago and passed away, um, December thirty. So we're retiring, or we're adjourning in his honor. We've already opened the Housing Authority, so are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
We've already given the closed-session discussion. Any comments from the public on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none. The consent calendar, we did the joint meeting, now the consent calendar.
I'll second, just a question on the demands register. Uh, can you get some, give us some, uh, information as to the fees that we paid for the Stroudling Yoka Carlson Law Firm? I see almost thirteen thousand dollars.
Yes.
Actually, fourteen thousand dollars.
Yes.
This is Housing Authority?
Yes.
It's, um, two, two pieces. One's related a little bit to the property on the loops, and the most of it is to the, um, sale of the, and transference of the property over on Juanita to Mary Erickson to build the five affordable housing units. We have, we have the, the, we had the scattered lots, they ended up being transferred to Mary Erickson, they sold them. We're now using the proceeds of that to dev- to develop, um, five units, ultimately five right now. On Juanita, right now, three, and there'll be five. So they're working on resolving that, doing the transfer.
So he did the legal escrow work and all that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to point out the relative bargain of Robbins and Hold, and Holdaway. You charged us one-twenty-fifth as much as-
I hope to do better next month.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Any opposition? Hearing none. That's approved unanimously. Any member reports? Any reports of officers? Hearing none. We're adjourned. The next item is the successor agency. Any items to be added or deleted? Any comments from the public? None. Okay, consent calendar? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Any opposition? Hearing none. We're adjourned. Thank you all.